Good evening, everyone. Adequate notice this meeting was provided by sending such notice to the Asbury Park Press, the Middletown Patch, the Middletown Township Public School District website, and the posting of such notice at the Bogus Teamline Administrative Offices and each middle and secondary school in the district. Roll call.
Mrs. Caminiti?
Here.
Mr. Donlin? Mrs. Farley?
Here.
Mr. Heffernan?
Here.
Mr. Little?
Here.
Mrs. Minis?
Here.
Mrs. Wright?
Here.
Mrs. Tobacco?
Here.
Mr. Capone?
Here.
I now need a motion for executive session from matters of PIB, negotiations, and personal matters. So, I'm sorry. Next one, go first.
Here.
Sophia Haverbrook. There you are, I'm sorry.
Good to see you. Very nice.
Yeah, in person.
Hi, everyone. Here are the highlights for the month of March for Middletown North. John Scallow organized the Middletown High School North Hall of Fame induction ceremony on March 10th to recognize, preserve, and honor our former athletes, teens, coaches, and individuals who have made significant contributions to the athletic programs at High School North and the Middletown community. Matthew Klimovic and Quinn Arndt, their student body president and vice president, were the MCs, and the student government members served as guides. Jordan Lindsay was a recipient of the Caring Award for Middletown High School North at Brookdale Community College on March 10th. Meet of Champions medal winners include Levi Wilson with a long jump event placing number four in New Jersey with a new personal record, and the high jump event placing second place also with a new personal record. Haley Guerrier also capped off an outstanding season with a personal record and seventh-place medal in the 55-meter hurdles. The Drum Club put on the spring musical A Chorus Line on March 18th and 19th in the auditorium. Everyone and attendants had rave reviews for the acting, singing, and dancing, as well as the set design, lighting, and sound. The varsity hockey team and coaching staff made it to the state finals in a well-played and hard-fought season. We are so proud of their accomplishments throughout the season. The team won the Mayor's Cup beating High School South and the Hanchen Cup beating St. John De Nanny. The June varsity team won the President's Cup beating High School South. A team was also honored by Mayor Tony Perry at town hall. The High School North Environmental Club will be initiating a recycling campaign at High School North. The focus will be on making a... The Environmental Club will also be selling shirts for Earth Day and for their tree-planting initiative. On March 23rd, an admin and student forum was held in the library media center during Block C 4. The National Honor Society, with advisors Ms. McGowan, Ms. Van Etten, and Ms. Goldfarb, have selected their senior inductees for the 2022 school year. They have started to conduct meetings and have elected officers. The Robe Capa National History Honor Society has gone through the application process and will also be getting started within the coming weeks. Marissa Russo was in a teen arts festival at Brookdale. Marissa's oil painting, Gilbert the Duck, was chosen to go on to the State Teen Arts Festival in June, where finalists have a chance of winning scholarships for college. A warm welcome to our new staff members, Lisa Moss, freshman guidance counselor at Northern South, and Jason Glezman, social studies. Ty Bowler and Sal Rasiopi were accepted in the All-Shores Symphony Band. Sophia Haverbrook had two short documentaries, Jay and Silent Bob's Secret Stash reopening, and Ruby's Pop-Up, accepted to the Garden State Film Festival that screened this past weekend. The spring sports season has started up. Nine student athletes attended the spring captains conference today, March 29th, at Freehold Township High School. The focus of the presentation was on sportsmanship and leadership. There's a virtual financial meeting tonight from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. The Nevers Club will be hosting a women's perjury celebration on Thursday, March 31st. There will be music games and prizes in the library. Come out and learn, connect, and empower. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. Thanks up from High School South, Ryan Fregna.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. I'm going to share the South happenings from the month of March. For starters, Maura Collins was chosen to write the teen scene segment for the March edition of the journal. Six films from Middletown High School South will be screened at the Brightside Film Festival in Jersey on March 12th at 2:00 p.m. The South film, A Fistful of Pasta, took third place in the student category at this year's Barrymore Film Festival. Two students won Elk's Most Valuable Student Scholarship this year, Elizabeth Rankin and Gabriella Casco. They were honored at a breakfast with Mid-Middletown Township dignitaries. The award is based on academics, service, and leadership. Both Elizabeth and Gabriella will move on to the state round of the competition. Twenty-four students have entered the New Jersey Technology Student Association competition in nine categories. The following South students won positions in All-Shores Symphony Band, Adriana Macris, tenor sax, Anthony DiAntuono, French horn, and Leilly Grzbowski, the tuba. Senior Abigail Heller was one of four students that submitted artwork to the Monmouth County Teen Arts Festival. Her submission was chosen to be featured in the curated exhibit titled Best of Teen Arts. The pieces hanging at the Freehold Mall until April 4th. South had fourteen artists whose artwork was showcased in the Monmouth County Teen Arts Festival. For the Middletown South film program, Submerge and Sound, A Guy Named Pete, has been accepted into the 2022 Film Now Festival in Amler, Pennsylvania. Out of hundreds of submissions, this film was placed in the top three of their documentary film category. The film will be playing on a big screen at the historic Amler Theater in Pennsylvania on Sunday, April 24th at 4:00 p.m. Maura Collins and Darla Matches took home the award for Best Homegrown Narrative, short of their film, The Love That Remains, at the Garden State Film Festival. Submerge and Sound, A Guy Named Pete, received first runner-up for the New Jersey Hometown Documentary at the Garden State Film Festival. Four films from the South took home the following awards at the Brightside Film Festival in Jersey City. Best Editing, Best Documentary, Best Comedy, Best Concept, and Best Animation. Juliana Trachtenberg, a 12th grade student at High School South, was awarded a $500 scholarship from the New Jersey Council for Exceptional Children and was invited to attend a virtual presentation to accept the scholarship. Lastly, High School South Friendship Club collected various items in need for Ukraine and donated them to a local collection center. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. All right, now we need a resolution for executive session. Motion for executive session from matters of PIB, negotiations, and personal matters. Go on, favor. opposed? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Adequate notice this meeting was provided by sending such notice to the Asbury Park Press, the Middletown Patch and the Middletown Township Public School District website, and the posting of such notice at the August T Minor administrative offices in each elementary, middle, and secondary school in the district. Roll over.
Mrs. Caminetti?
Here.
Mr. Donlin? Mrs. Farley?
Here.
Mr. Heffernan?
Here.
Mr. Little?
Here.
Mrs. Minewes?
Here.
Mrs. Wright?
Here.
Mrs. Tobacco?
Here.
Mr. Capone?
Here.
We'll now stand with Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence for Barbara Bachmeister, passed away on March 18, 2022. Ms. Bachmeister was an elementary school teacher in the district for 39 years, retiring from Bayview Elementary School in 2011. We extend our condolences to the Bachmeisters' family.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, we're now going to lead off with a presentation on the annual comprehensive financial report. Matt Holman, Paul McHenry, and Allison. And Mike Zolios.
Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. Very nice to see everybody in person.
in person. Very nice. My name is Matt Holman. I'm a partner with Holman, Freddie Allison. We're here to go over the annual audit. I like to say it's record-setting in nature in that it's 209 pages this year, so congratulations on that, I guess. Seems to get bigger every year. So, this year, like many of the other years, the state was delayed in giving us the numbers that we needed to include through note disclosures. So, once again, I have to kind of lead off by saying we're dated in this report for March 11th of this year. I wish the numbers could be a little more timely, and we're certainly looking for the state to keep pressing them to get the numbers to us more timely. The due date for these, just so you know, used to be in November, got pushed to December, and now it seems that every year we're a little later and later. So, we certainly don't like that trend. We like to get the numbers out to you as timely as possible, but it's where we're at, and, you know. So, I'm fortunate that I'm presenting this now, but moving forward, we hope that that increases, you know, going forward. But, with saying that, we'd just first like to say that the audit that we're presenting today is very clean audit for the district. Middletown is one of the cleanest districts that we audit. We do about 40 across the state, and I'm happy to say that, and nothing's changed this year with that. And it's been an impressive year, most likely, you know, for many reasons. And special thanks goes out to the business office. We put them through a lot of testing. Amy has put through a lot. Denise has put through a lot from us. And not only do they have to deal with us this year, they changed accounting systems. There was a major change in accounting principle that happened this year that had to be implemented perfectly throughout the audit, and it was. So, I'm happy to report that. And, you know, they had to work through COVID and us being a little more remote than we usually are, but it was nice to come in and, you know, be back into the district and be able to complete this for the district. So, I know you don't have audit reports in front of you, but I did want to hit a couple of the highlights that are in here. And when you do have the reports, feel free to reach out to me. Amy certainly can get me, and, you know, I can answer any detailed questions that you may have, but...
The reports are on the website. They're posted reports.
Okay. So, I'll lead with, on page 13, when you do see the report, you'll see, once again, the district has been given one of the highest honors in the country with the Certificate of Excellence for their reporting. And that's really based on last year's report. It will be included in this year's report because it comes in after the audit. Goes down to really Georgia gets reviewed by a detailed reviewer, and they will check to see, to make sure that the report that we're, that this 209-page document is in full compliance with all accounting regulations that needs to follow. So, it comes back, and if it is, you're awarded the Certificate of Excellence. And once again, I think, Amy, you may know better than me, at this point, I think it's at least 10 years in a row. But, very impressive overall. So, something to be absolutely proud of there. The next big item that you'll see starts on page 17, and that's our opinion for the school district. And again, I'm happy to inform you that our opinion is the best that can be rendered for a school district. It's an unmodified opinion on the financials of the district. And really what that means is I did not have to modify the standard audit opinion for school districts. If you did have any issues noted throughout the audit that were severe enough, I might have to modify this opinion to tell you, except for this item or that item, you were in compliance. But, none of that is the case here. Again, as clean as can possibly be there. And if you continue along, you'll see we have two other opinions that are issued in this monstrous report. Page 195 is the internal control opinion for the school district. When you perform a governmental audit, you also have to take into account the internal controls in the school district as you perform your financial statement audit. And again, I'm happy to announce that there was no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal control that had to be presented within that report. As always, we do have meetings with management to discuss any items that we see during the audit that we feel may improve the district's financial reporting overall, but, as I said, Amy and Denise do such a good job. We're really down to such minor details that every year it's a challenge to come up with something new to give to Amy in that respect. So, I truly appreciate that. And then the last opinion that you will see is on page 197. This is on the major programs of the school district. So, what happens is every time that the district spends over $750,000 in state and federal grant money, there's a single audit that has to be performed. So, we performed a state single audit and a federal single audit for the district this year. And the federal single audit probably makes sense to you. It's on the CARES money that came in and the COVID relief money that came in. So, you know, you can, you can know that we looked at that in detail. We performed all the compliance. The district was in compliance with all of the requirements that are broken out for those programs, and we really had no findings to report in the report for that as well. So, once again, those are the best opinions that can be rendered for the school district. And, you know, once again, the business office is doing a wonderful job with the grant requirements that they have to deal with as well. So, with that, those are really the major highlights, and we put the district through much testing. And again, I thank the business office. They are always cooperative. A pleasure to work with. And in this case, you know, they had to provide backup for hundreds of different vouchers, receipts, numerous different items, and they were able to provide it all to us, which is very impressive. And so, overall, a very good audit, and if there's any specific questions or anything that anybody has, more than welcome to answer at this time.
Any questions from that? Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
You, too.
Matt, we'd like to thank you and your team as well, and I would like to thank Denise DeRosa. Denise DeRosa is our Assistant BA and everybody in the business office because, like Matt said, they all have to provide much documentation for the auditors to go through. It's not fun. I almost feel like we do the budget and audit on a year-round basis now, so it's...
Amy and Denise, congratulations. Great show. Apologize to everybody. We're having some Wi-Fi incident issues, so if we do cut off, we're trying to do this live, but in the event we don't, we will be streaming this for tomorrow, and you can watch the replay. We're now going to move to opportunity for public comment on agenda items only. If anyone has anything to state, please step up to the mic. Seeing no one coming to the mic. We're going to go to our proclamations. We have a National Autism Awareness Month. Be it resolved that we, the Middletown Board of Education, do hereby proclaim April 2022 as Autism Awareness Month in the Middletown Township Public Schools, and urge all employees and students to participate in Autism Awareness Month activities in order to become better educated on the subject of autistic spectrum disorders. National Paraprofessional Appreciation Day. Be it resolved the Middletown Township Board of Education do hereby proclaim Wednesday, April 6, 2022, as National Paraprofessional Appreciation Day in the Middletown Township Public Schools. Child Abuse Prevention Month. We, the Middletown Township Board of Education, do hereby proclaim April 2022 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in the Middletown Township Public Schools, and urge all stations to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. I need a motion to approve the minutes for executive session on 215, pre-meeting workshop 215, executive session 223, and regular voting meeting on 223.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Oppose? Abstentions? Moving on to my report. Couple of congratulations for the North hockey team, which is an incredible, it was an incredible journey for them. I was there at the Middletown representation. It was incredible at the Crew Center a couple of weeks back, and as, oh, the mayor, actually, the mayor's with me, and he said there was more people in attendance at this event than there were for the prior weeks. It doubles me, which is incredible. And you saw both sides, and we gave it our best. I still believe we were the better team. Unfortunately, the outcome wasn't the way we wanted it to be, but it was a phenomenal, phenomenal game. Another congratulations to Ms. Amy Jennings, our Bayview Special Ed teacher. She was awarded the Distinguished Citizen of the Year Award by Mayor Perry, myself, Deputy Mayor Hyvo, and Kimberly Crowe in attendance. And I have to say, spending time in that classroom with all the children was a wonderful day for myself. Also, congratulations to the first cheer ability squad, Special Forces, the first in the history of central New Jersey. What a fantastic bunch of children they were. And I must say, we were represented by two Middletown students, Hannah Pasecki and Alexis Applegate. Great job, ladies. And a big thank you to Middletown Special Ed Teacher Brooke Halli, who is also a coach. I'm going to also speak about a meeting that we had yesterday. Myself, Mr. Heffernan, and Mayor Perry was with Senator Bing Gopal yesterday. We were speaking about some S2, how we can maybe capture some more money coming into the district. Approximately an hour and a half of accommodation. It was very productive. We're going to follow up. Mr. Gopal, in about two weeks, with his Chief of Staff, speak about some more issues that we can try and finally stop the hemorrhaging of us losing money for the S2. And he also hadn't mentioned that there was a tranche of originally $25 million of more aid coming out for the schools, which he believes are going to be up to about $15 million now. We have to meet other qualifications. We're going to speak with him in two weeks, and we'll see what really that entails for him.
Did he mention anything about, I think I heard something about the high school starting later, 8:30? Is that what he's promoting? Did you guys, is that, is that something different?
I briefly, briefly brought that up. I did tell him about some logistical issues that we would have. He sort of did understand that. I believe he mentioned that there might have been 30 or so schools that already start at that time already.
Right.
I said, but now coordinating after-school activities, transportation, we're asking for a real nightmare.
I believe you appreciate our input.
And he did appreciate our input, and he said, "Let's talk more recently." And that's really it.
So, Frank, was there a timeframe for this new money that you were just discussing?
So, it's unfortunately going to come out after the budget sometime for the summer, I believe, maybe June, July. Like I said, it was originally allocated for $25 million. Now, it's going to be $50 million after giving out to the schools. And as long as we meet the requirements, we're going to be able to afford this money. Now, there's no estimate of what we could get, what we can't get. It's also obviously how efficient we're running as a district. They say that. Our enrollment, that has been dropping for the last 10 years, which we think over 10 years. And, you know, that's how we really have to approach this, is just making sure that we're downing our ice cream sandwiches and do the best we can to try and stop the meaning of the... Anyone else? Move on to the report with this administrator. I need a motion to approve items 1 through 4.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Oppose? Abstentions? And the optimist, Marilyn Walker, for the superintendent's office.
Yes. Okay, we're celebrating Autism Awareness Month this month in April, and as you see on the proclamation on the agenda, it highlights the work of our administration, teachers, CARIS, related services providers, and child study team in supporting our students with autism. These children are integral members of our community, and, you know, we'll be celebrating them with activities throughout the month, educational and just fun activities. I also want to express our gratitude for the work of our paraprofessionals on behalf of our students. On tonight's agenda is also a proclamation for National Paraprofessional Day, which is this coming Wednesday, April 6. As the proclamation states, the support services provided by our paraprofessionals are vital to our students' success. We want to thank them all for what they do every day for our students. I also want to thank the students from our bands throughout the district and our instrumental music teachers for the performance they put on before our board meeting this evening. It was really great, and we actually learned when we got there that they hadn't even practiced together before, like a half an hour before the show. They had been given music, and they went home and practiced themselves. There were students from various schools, from the fourth grade all the way through the 12th grade, and, you know, we really enjoyed it. It was a great little show, very quick. And it was in celebration of music in March being music in our schools month. And the students just wanted to remind us of the importance that music played, you know, in their, for them and for us, too. All of the arts are important in our students' lives and in our lives, and we have so many talented students. And spring is a time where our schools plan a lot of activities that, you know, circle around the arts, whether it's performances or exhibits to showcase their talents. And we have a few coming up pretty soon in April. We have the High School South Play, Grease, on April 7 through the 9, and all the performances start at 7:00 PM, and they're in the theater of High School South. High School North is also holding their Art Fusion, which is a student art show, on April 7, from 5:30 to 7:00 in the media center right here. You know, we really encourage you to come out. Our students are very talented. The shows and the art exhibits are absolutely amazing. You will leave entertained and awed with our students, no doubt. And then just one last thing. We put out a weekly newspaper. Actually, Chris is instrumental in writing that, and it's about the activities that have happened during the week, as well as things that are coming up, and a lot of the things that Mr. Capone spoke about. There's more detail in the newspaper, things that we're proud of our students and just want to celebrate with them. So, we encourage you to go on the website and check out the newsletter. It comes out about 4 o'clock every Friday. Sometimes we're a little delayed, so I come out Saturday morning, but most of the times, 4 o'clock, because we're trying to get the articles in from the whole week. So, you know, it's kind of like crunch time. But we do encourage you to just check it out. There's always a couple of articles about what's going on with our students in school and upcoming events.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Okay, need a motion to approve items C2 through 10?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Who is that number 2?
Abstentions?
Wait, can I get an update on what's...
You know, your...
I have 6. Number 6, I believe, is the 10-month employee calendar. Can we get an update on what is that that we're voting on, which changes? Because it's not... The employee calendar?
It's actually, you already voted on the calendar. This is just an agreement, a sidebar basically, with the MTBA.
It's for the make-up dates for public, it's British four-year. So, it's in recognition of the days that employees can use if they elect to take off on a federal holiday, on a day that we're open, schools are open, the days that they choose to make them up instead of being adopted or using personally.
It's when they're going to make it up?
For the end of this year.
And when are they making them up?
It's, I believe, it's either that Monday or Tuesday, because we had it adjusted because the staff last day, it's not a student last day, that Friday. So, it's that following Monday, Tuesday, because there were two holidays.
Okay. I just wanted to know what I was talking, thank you.
I believe that's it.
Good leader.
Thank you.
I need a motion to approve 14, 1 through 5, A1 through 5, technology? Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? I need a motion to approve B, items 1 through 5, Student Services?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Moving to Facilities. Motion to approve item 1?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstentions? Motion to approve Policy 1 and 2? Second reading? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Discussion first? All in favor? Oppose? Abstentions? Correct them in instruction. Items 1 and 2, need a motion to approve?
Second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Finance, items 1, 2, and 3, motion to approve? Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Moving to Student Activity G, number 1, motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Personnel, moving to now. Items 1 through 7, motion to approve?
Motion. Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Oppose? I'm sorry? All in favor?
Yes.
Oppose? Abstentions? We're going now to approve items 8 through 13? Most to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Items 14 through 19? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Amy, can I get a roll poll vote for items 20, 21, and 22?
Still need a motion, second?
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Caminiti?
Yes.
Mrs. Farley?
Yes.
Mr. Heffernan?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mrs. Minuies?
Yes.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Tobacco?
Yes.
Mr. Capone?
Yes, and a big congratulations to Mr. Ranella, Mr. Russmussen, and Mr. Doge.
We have some big shoes to fill at High School South, won't be telling you.
Yeah.
All right, anyone for old business? Anyone for new business?
I just, I have one thing. I just wanted to thank Middletown Township Friends and Diverse Learners for their event that they had on Thursday night here at High School North. They showed a film called "The Big Picture: Rethinking Dyslexia", which was followed by a panel discussion with, I mean, amazing educational professionals and a recent graduate from High School North who talked about her experiences of going through the district and what she experienced, obviously, being diagnosed with dyslexia and how she was able to overcome it, and she's now in her first year of college. So it was really great to hear her. And I brought my son with me, my 10-year-old, who is diagnosed with dyslexia. And I have to say that talking to him afterwards was a great experience because I think it's the first time he finally saw, like, he's not alone in all of this. And I think seeing, like, other kids who are in college, because I think for him, he's really struggling figuring out if he's going to be able to do it. So as a parent, I just really appreciated it.
That's great, definitely. Thank you. All right, I'm going to bring up some new business for the calendar that we need to make some adjustments on. We have a May 11 rehire meeting, which we're going to want to include the workshop with as well. Does anybody have an issue with that? Good? May 25, we're going to have to move that to May 31. Does anybody have an issue with that, Dave? Okay. June, I think we have the 14, I'm voting, is that correct?
June 14, yes.
June 14? All right, let's move into July. Would July 19 work for everyone? Which one meeting in July?
Yeah.
Good? Good? Okay. August, the 24th and the 30th?
Then why don't you tell me?
I'm, oh, wait, the 24th.
Yeah.
Okay. When is your vacation?
It's that week.
That week, a week?
Okay. That's the last week before school, so we're going to try and get that in, but...
We did leave prior?
So we could collapse and say, we didn't get to the 30th? 30?
Yeah.
So one meeting on the 30th?
One meeting on the 30th? Not the 24th?
We have two members that are...
No, I'm just saying, so we're taking the 24th off?
24th comes off. September the 21st and 27th?
I can't do the 24th.
Is it a week or just a day?
It's that day. I could do the 20th.
The 20th? How does the 20th work for everyone? So the 20th and the 27th, that works for everyone?
Yes.
October 19th and 25th?
Wait a minute, Frank. The 27th is, I don't know if the second day of Rosh Hashanah is that, that's the day, on the 27th of September? Is it okay? I don't know. I'm just bringing it up.
October 26th is Rosh Hashanah.
It's the 26th, 27th.
Is school open that day, uh, New York?
I think we're only, we're only going to the 26th. Currently, I'm wrong, but I believe Rosh Hashanah ends at sundown, that's the...
Okay.
So the 27th would work?
4/7 is good.
So the 20th and 27th, everyone's good?
Okay.
October the 19th and the 25th? John, do you? Yep?
Yeah, good, thank you.
All good? November the 21st and 29th? Everyone good?